We call the meeting to order. Please rise. We have a moment of silence to keep our troops and our law enforcement officers in our prayers that they come home safe every day. Thank you. Dennis, what's your flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-10 has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Here.
Freeholder Bellante. Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Nara.
Here.
Freeholder Tamaro.
Here.
Freeholder Valenti.
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Here. At this time we're going to have the administration of the oath of office to our incoming freeholder Nara. The clerk will read a letter regarding the appointment of Shanti Nara of North Brunswick who will fill the vacancy of former freeholder H. James Polos.
This letter is from the Middlesex County Democratic Organization dated October 19, 2016, addressed to Amy Patricelli, clerk of the Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders. Dear Clerk Patricelli, this will serve to certify that in conformance with NJSA 19:13-20, the Middlesex County Democratic Organization selected the following individual to fill the unexpired term of freeholder James Polos at their convention on Tuesday, October 18, 2016, at Middlesex County College. Shanti Nara, 945 Irwin Place, North Brunswick, New Jersey, 08902. This will further certify that Ms. Nara is qualified under the laws of the state of New Jersey to be a candidate for the office of Middlesex County Freeholder and is a member of the Democratic Party. Attached here too is a certification from Shanti Nara as required by NJSA 19:13-20. Sincerely, Kevin P. McCabe, Chairman, Middlesex County Democratic Organization.
Before we go any further, I'd just like to acknowledge some folks that came here out of their business schedules to see this historic event with our new freeholder. I see Mayor of North Brunswick who will administer the oath of office, Mayor Francis Mack Womack. I see Councilman Ralph Andrews, Councilman Bob Davis, and Councilman Carlos Socia, and also Middlesex County Democratic Chairman Kevin McCabe. At this time, if the mayor would come up to the podium and administer the oath of office to our new freeholder.
Thank you, sir.
She has her family here as well. No, her mom is here, that's for sure. Yeah, she can go up there, she can hold the Bible for him.
I, Shanti Nara.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And the governments established in this state.
And the governments established in this state.
And in the United States.
And in the United States.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of member Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders.
Of member of Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
to say that I am sure that freeholder Nara will make a positive impact on this freeholder board. And for the Middlesex County residents, we welcome you, welcome aboard. If there's anything that you need, questions about this, concerns, feel free to call any of us. And I'm speaking on behalf of the rest of the board as well because I know our colleagues are very receptive to helping one another out. And of course, our staff, our administration, and all our employees are looking forward to working with you. And again, good luck. If you'd like to make some comments, you're more than welcome to make some comments.
Very short, since we started this meeting late, thank you very much, freeholder director, for allowing me to get my mom here in time. I just wanted to say thank you primarily, first and foremost, to my North Brunswick family. The mayor and three of my fellow councilmen are here, as well as a number of committee people and other members of our community. I have members of my family here. And I also have Chairman McCabe and Rob Zuckerman from the MCDO organization. And I wanted to thank the Middlesex County Democratic Organization for putting their faith in me and giving me this opportunity. I have a lot to learn. I think I started a very small step today with the freeholder director, and I'm just very eager to get started to figure out what it is that the residents and all the communities need and what I might be able to do in this position to serve them. And I grew up in North Brunswick, so I'm a very proud Middlesex County girl, and this is an amazing occasion for me. So thank you all very, very much.
Yes, we have a few recognitions this evening. First is recognizing the 30th Annual Central Jersey Spinal Court Association Dinner. Next is a commitment of resolution recognizing Bobby Locke posthumously for her efforts on behalf of the youth of Middlesex County. Next is recognizing BAPS Mendier on their 25th anniversary. Next is recognizing Patrolman Gay Assistant Fire Chief Garron and Sarerville residents Daniel Hokenios, Robert Kern, Tyler Wood, and Kimberly Carson for their heroism during a two-story home fire. And last is recognizing Sportsman's Barber Shop on their 50th anniversary.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamaro. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood. Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Nara.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. This time, if all the heroes from Sarerville would come up to the podium, please. Is this everyone from Sarerville?
Oh, it's like, for my husband.
Okay. Please stand over here. It came to our attention that back on August 22nd this year, there was a structure fire. And Sarerville Patrolman Gay Assistant Fire Chief Goran, Kimberly Carlson, Daniel Hokenios, Robert Kern, and Tyler Wood, they're worthy of special recognition for what they did in saving a family from a structure fire. A fire raged through a two-story home on Jacobson Street in Sarerville. A newborn infant in a car seat was thrown into the arms of rescuers, and three other children jumped from a second-floor bathroom window and were caught by Patrolman Gay, Chief Goran, and neighbors Hokenios, Kern, and Wood. And Kimberly Carlson brought the children to a church building until EMS arrived and treated the family. We can't thank you enough for what you did. You saved lives, a lot of lives, because that could have turned out to even been a worse incident than that was. And it's just on people like yourselves that take the initiative and just don't even think about your own safety and worrying about your fellow human being, your special people, and we can't say thank you enough for your heroic efforts. Thank you so much. Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
No.
Sure.
I'm sorry my husband Dan could not be here, but I did really want to bring attention to Kim Carlson. Kim was the first person who saw the smoke, ran out, and called for help, and it was her yelling "Fire, fire" that brought the attention of myself and calling to my husband. And I wanted to mention what an outstanding job the Sarerville Fire Department did. Not only did they save that family, but it was a very windy day. They also saved the other structures. It was very organized, well orchestrated. Everyone had a job and a responsibility, and they executed it to the best of their ability. And I'm proud to say that I am a Sarerville resident. Thank you.
I'm not much of a public speaker, but the other person that needs to have a little thank you is our Fire Prevention Bureau for the job they did in training the children in the school system for the rescues that took place. Was one of their children that first jumped out of the window and took place from Kevin's training from fire prevention. So a big thank you to the Fire Prevention Bureau of Sarerville.
Congratulations, question?
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Correspondence?
Each freeholder's been provided with a list of correspondence received by the clerk's office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the office of the clerk of the board for reference.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamaro. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes for approval.
The regular meeting for the Board of Chosen Freeholders, October 6, 2016, at 7:00 PM.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamaro. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Nara.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Yes. Ordinances. The clerk will read ordinance number 431 by title only.
Refunding bonds ordinance of the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, providing for the refunding of certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the county to achieve net present value debt service savings and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $45 million aggregate principal amount of general obligation refunding bonds of the county to affect such refunding and appropriating the proceeds therefore and authorizing the public hearing to be held on Monday, November 14, 2016, at 7:00 PM and publication thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 431 on first reading?
So move.
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, second by Freeholder Tamaro. Roll call.
Freeholder Armwood.
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny. Freeholder Nara.
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro.
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti.
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios.
Okay, reports of freeholders. Freeholder 10, 11.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. From the Office of Extension Services, Middlesex County 4H is hosting a 4H Haunted House and Hayride on October 21st and October 22nd, and also October 28th and October 29th, timed 7:00 to 11:00 PM on all four days. It will be at the Middlesex County 4H Center, 645 Cranberry Road in East Brunswick. From Culture and Heritage Halloween Storytelling by Lantern Light, October 21st to the 22nd, timed 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and October 23rd, timed 2:00 PM, at the East Jersey Old Town Village at Johnson Park, 1050 River Road, Piscataway, New Jersey. Ghost Stories, Children's Crafts, and Refreshments. Indians in America: Lost Legacies and Contemporary Complexities, October 22nd from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the Middlesex County College. Kiyati Joshi, professor of education at Fairleigh Dickinson University, will present a lecture focusing on the history of Asian Indian communities in New Jersey and the United States. And that concludes my report, Freeholder Director.
Thank you. Freeholder Charlie Kenny.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. We just voted on ordinance number 431, which is a refunding resolution for $45 million. We're going out to refund these bonds because the market is favorable for this action. We hope to take advantage of this in the next couple of months. Because of the lower rates available, the county will be gaining sufficient savings to meet the state requirements to do the refunding of these bonds. Actually, this number changed, this is how good the market is, this number changed from my first edition of this report to tonight. We're going to be looking at approximately $1.5 million in savings on these bonds. And with this $45 million, the county has refunded about $250 million in bonds, saving at approximately $14 million in interest cost that would be charged to the county. So I thank Joe Peretti, the office, and all the people involved in putting that together. The other item I have is, we have on our agenda for tonight is the single audit for the federal awards and state financial assistance. Once again, I ask that the freeholders accept the audit that was done. We had no recommendations from the auditor on this audit. Once again, it reflects the sound principles and operations of Middlesex County, but it also reflects the department heads and all the employees that are involved because of the fact that everybody has a little bit of a hand in this. And you know, with so many hands operating in these grants, we're able to come away without any problems. So once again, congratulations to everybody involved. I'd like to just quickly thank Gary Vesch from the, is it the Road Department? I don't want to give the wrong title.
Public Works.
Public Works, okay. We had a situation in Woodbridge where we had a request by some senior residents for some help in regards to a crossing. Gary and his crew were out there in a timely, very timely fashion, and were able to address the needs of these residents. So I thank you very much and all those involved in putting that together. And I would also want to congratulate the new freeholder and wish you the best. And as the freeholder director says, if you need any help anytime, feel free to call or email or whatever the case may be.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Director.
Thank you. Freeholder Shanti Nara.
This is a report from the Department of Public Safety and Health. Looking for a safe and free way to dispose of old technology, Middlesex County is holding an electronic waste day to safely recycle all old gadgets. Televisions of any size, desktop and laptop computers, and computer monitors will be collected. Unloading help will be available for anyone with a particularly large television. The drop-off will be held at Lake Papayani Park in Edison on November 5th between 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM. Questions? Please call 732-745-4170. Construction for two 750-kilowatt generators at the county's Emergency Operations Center has recently commenced. This project will provide the county EOC with fully adequate and redundant power to facilitate all emergency operations during any traditional power failure. The bulk of all the funding for this project has been secured through federal grants. This project is anticipated to be completed by early 2017. And finally, the Office of Health Services wants to remind everyone that flu season is upon us, and it is important for everyone to get their flu shot. The Middlesex County Office of Health Services provides these flu shots to the public. The cost is $15, and those with Medicare should bring their Medicare card with them for billing purposes. Please visit the Middlesex County website at www.middlessexcountynj.gov, and in the search tool, type "flu shots" for a schedule of the upcoming flu clinics around the county. Any questions, please call 732-745-3100. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Freeholder Charlie Tamaro.
Thank you, Director, and welcome, Freeholder Nara. And I was very impressed with all the photographers taking a picture. I felt like I was at a presidential press conference. Good luck with you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Saturday, October 1st, 2016 marked the 10th anniversary of the Middlesex County Conservation Corps. The John A. Phillips Reserve in Obridge hosted our celebration and was this year's site for the National Public Lands Day, where volunteers gave back to the public lands. The day was spent on the trails, cleaning debris, building a footbridge, and improving the quality of our trails. In the years since the Conservation Corps started, which was 10 years ago, 6,000 individuals have logged over 60,000 hours of work with the Conservation Corps. Nearly 113,000 pounds of trash and recyclables collected from our open space, including 871 tires that were recycled, over 2,000 plants, shrubs, and trees planted as part of the habitat restoration projects, and 22.5 miles of newly constructed hiking trails, bringing a total of marked maintained trails for public use to 30 miles. I am very proud to announce that the Middlesex County Greenway was selected by the American Planning Association New Jersey chapter as a great public space in New Jersey. On October 15th, I was on hand at the Middlesex County Greenway to celebrate the receipt of this highly competitive and distinguished award. The Greenway met many rigorous criteria that involved its viability as an open space, the fact that it unites several district high-density diverse and urban neighborhoods, and ensures that the residents of all kinds can come and walk, jog, or bike, or be surrounded by lush landscaping, and be safe on the trail. The Greenway promotes a healthy lifestyle, as well as spurs our local economy, development as residents and others come to this location and enjoy this unique park. The Greenway was designated with this title, "Great Public Space," by the most prestigious urban planning organization in the county. We should be very proud of this award. And there's still plenty of time to, great fall weather ahead, to be sure you get out and explore the Middlesex County Greenway, especially now that the leaves are changing. So get out there and enjoy this 3.5-mile gen that is part of the Middlesex County Park System. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Freeholder. Freeholder Blanquita Valente.
Thank you, Freeholder Director. Like my freeholder colleagues, I want to give Freeholder Nara a very warm welcome. And we're available anytime that you wish to reach to us, you know, to speak to you or whatever the item might be. Our gain is North Brunswick Council's loss, so we're ahead of the game. Now, from the Department of Community Services, the Middlesex County Clerk's office will be open from 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 1st, and from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, November 5th, to process vote-by-mail applications. The office is located on the fourth floor of this building, the Middlesex County Administration Building, which is of course located here at 75 Wyers Street near Brunswick. We hope that these extended hours will make the vote-by-mail option even more accessible to those residents who choose to use it. And from our Office of Aging and Disabled Services, being the primary support person for a loved one who is vulnerable or who has a disability can be a consuming and sometimes overwhelming experience. To assist caregivers and provide them with the opportunity to share ideas and learn more about supportive services, the Middlesex County Office of Aging and Disabled Services, excuse me, will host a caregiver retreat on Saturday, November 5th, from 9:00 to 12:30 PM at the Forest Gate Club in Monroe Township. Registration is required by October 28th. Please contact the Middlesex County Office of Aging and Disabled Services at 732-745-4267 to register or to obtain more information. And that's the end of my report, Director.
Thank you. I just want to report a few things. As I've been traveling around the county, speaking to high school students, I also went to Carterhead High School, speaking to the JOB program, which stands for Jobs for America. And it was a great experience for myself and the students as well, giving them a little brief overview of how county government works, the electing process, the election process, and multiple services that the county provides, and what a freeholder does. I also made a trip to the VFW District 8 meeting, which is the Veterans of Foreign Wars, which is a conglomerate of a group of local VFWs. And we had our Veterans Affairs Department attend as well, notifying them of all the veterans programs that we offer. We had our groundbreaking at Roosevelt Hospital last week, which we're all excited about. We can't wait for that project to be completed. It's going to take a year for construction, for the rehabilitation of the interior of that facility, but when it's done, it's going to be a beautiful facility. Again, that's for 84 affordable senior housing, and it will have a small component for homelessness, and it also will have 25% veterans priority. And lastly, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I can't encourage anyone more, any women more than anybody, that you go for examinations, tests, tests, tests is so important. Preventive medical care is so important. So many lives have been saved because of preventive care. Okay. Mr. Kelso, any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
This time, I open up the meeting to the public on any resolutions that are listed only. State your name, address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, members of the board. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, the editor of the New Brunswick Today newspaper. First of all, congratulations and welcome to the new freeholder. Wish you all the best. Just had a couple of items I wanted to learn a little more about. So some of the buildings, I think I might have asked this before, but Building 216 in Edison, where is that? What is that building? And what type of work is being done there for $320,000?
Khalid?
The building 216 is a private, well, it's located in the college campus.
Right, okay. And it's being, I guess, inspected, and there's a project going on there? Is it improved?
The purpose of the activity now is to do some remediation and to bring the building up to style, because some of the buildings have upgraded so that it can be better.
Right. And what type of remediation? What's being remediated?
There are a number of things that are going on. One is the, there is some specifications that have to be done. There are some isolated areas that's been discussed and other areas.
Okay. And Epic Management's hired to do all of that work?
They have been hired to do construction administration.
Thank you very much. And then I think the county highway and bridge building, that's the one where 130 and 1 kind of meet? Is that correct? Or?
Wait.
That is. So the county owns that building?
Yes.
Okay. And the renovations for that one, what types of improvements?
Well, as part of our consolidation of the space, two offices are going to be consolidated so that is part of the renovation for company, company, company.
Okay. Which two offices?
It will include highways and bridges as well as the MCAT.
MCAT, okay, thank you. And then the next one is, I guess we're building a data center for the archives?
It would be a data center that would be located in the building of the archives. That would be a redundant data center.
A redundant data center? And so it would be within the existing footprint of the building? It's not an extension or an expansion? And just, can you give me some idea of how big, in terms of, I guess, I don't know, terabytes or?
It's more, it's not, I don't know the exact dimensions. It's more, it's not, I don't know the exact dimensions. You can check with the [inaudible]. Or actually, it's [inaudible]. And you should be able to get that. It's a lot of electronic components that need special care.
Okay.
But makes it special.
Gotcha. And the last one, the renovations to the Medical Examiner's Building, what improvements are being made there?
I believe that it's an extension.
Okay.
Just a clarification, on the medical examiner, it's really just better utilization of the internal space. There's a lot of unused and space in that facility that we can better maximize for the purposes of the fact that we brought Monmouth County Medical Examiner into that facility.
Right. I was going to ask, is this related to the?
It's all part of our ability to regionalize that facility to provide Monmouth County services as well as Middlesex County.
Gotcha. Thank you for the thorough answers, everyone. Couple points I want to make. 1678, digitizing historic newspapers, the Perth Amboy Public Library, I think that's an awesome thing, really good thing the county's doing. And, you know, as somebody in the newspaper business, I'd like to read old newspapers and see what was going on a while ago. And I look forward to trying to verify the claim I heard from a Board of Elections member that the elections in Perth Amboy have had chronic problems for, he said, in excess of 50 years. So I look forward to reading some of these old articles to see exactly about those chronic problems. And that's something I'll speak about a little later tonight, but I think it's something that, you know, the Freeholder Board should be aware of and should keep an eye out for. Last one I want to ask about-
In reference to the resolution you're dealing with?
Yes, sir. The last item I wanted to ask about was 1696, the Lead Poisoning Prevention Grant. What's that going to be used for?
Time is up.
I just, could I find out what that's going to be used for?
Anyone else in the public that would like to speak?
Sir, it's a reasonable question. What's the, how are you going to spend the lead poisoning?
Your time is up.
Sir, this is really not the way it should work. It's a reasonable question. It's an important issue.
You're out of order, Mr. Cradaville. Is there anyone else? Is there a motion to close?
Move the close of public portion?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Tamara, seconded by Freeholder Valente, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Kelso?
I believe we have one-
Do we have anyone that has?
I do. Freeholder Director, 16-1658.
Anyone else? Okay.
Freeholder Director, then, a motion would be in order to adopt the consent agenda consisting of Resolution Number 16-1653 through Resolution 16-1702, excluding Resolution 16-1658, to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Freeholder Nara? Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes.
Now, Freeholder Director, would it be appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Freeholder Tamara, and that's Resolution 16-1658?
Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second. Motion by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Armwood, roll call.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny?
Freeholder Nara? Yes.
Freeholder Tamara?
Is it not voting?
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to open up the meeting to the public on any item. Questions, please come up to the microphone, state your name, address, and you have five
Good evening, Richard Walling, 33 Deerbrook Boulevard, North Brunswick. First of all, hats off to the Freeholder Board and professional staff. You folks have moved into the 21st century full steam ahead, and you're doing a wonderful job. An example of that, I've been taking my grandchildren twice now over to East Jersey Old Town, and Mark and the staff over there have done a phenomenal job with interpretation, really outstanding job. It's come a long way.
Thank you.
When I was a kid with my mom, we worked on the first house over there under Dr. Claire, so that goes way back when. Tonight, I just want to mention one thing about a gem. The first historic district in Middlesex County is the Old Bridge Village Historic District, which ironically is in East Brunswick. So again, the Old Bridge Historic District is in East Brunswick. It's a little confusing to a lot of folks. It's the site of a Lenape village. Right after the year 1700, a tavern was built there. It was a confluence of the road from South Amboy to Burlington. It was the, and with the road that led ultimately up to New Brunswick. And there was a tavern established there right after 1700. And one of the first incidents in the village of a shady character was that in 1727, a local Indian sachem, Wicwela, shot and killed the tavern owner because the tavern owner would get the gentleman intoxicated and fraudulent land deeds would be produced. I mention that because we're doing a series of history walks down in the village the last two Saturdays of this month at 7:30. And if anybody's interested, it is on Facebook at East Brunswick Ghost Walk. Not only do we have 300 years of history, we have a lot of associated paranormal activity. The site of the tavern, 90 years later, in 1819, was also where a local judge, Judge Jacob Van Wickel, used his judicial authority to certify that upwards of almost 900 free local and regional African-Americans consented to be sent south into permanent and cruel slavery. And that all happened in Old Bridge Village at that Old Bridge Historic Tavern, which is now the site of the Old Bridge Deli. So that's another little twist of irony. Faulkner said, and I'm going to paraphrase Faulkner, that history is not dead, and the past is neither even past. We live with it all the time. In 1983, I led a team of volunteers to excavate the remains of an African-American burial ground on River Road, and the remains were reinterred at Chestnut Hill Cemetery. Last year, in 2015, I led a group of volunteers up near Fort William Henry at Lake George to survey and research and identify the site of French and Indian War military sites that are still extant and not destroyed by development. All of that comes circle to Old Bridge Village. There's a current road widening project and handicap access project that is being planned by the county, and I just want to let the freeholders know and the professional staff know that I and others stand ready, willing, and able to do whatever work is necessary for any archaeological remains that are there. The letter of the law may or may not require that they be assessed, and I'm not here to debate that. I'm only here to offer our services on a volunteer basis before the property is irrevocably lost through construction activity to go in and claim any, claim may be an interpretative word, to recover any archaeological remains. As I said, Native American artifacts have been found in the proximate area. It's right across the street of this tavern, as I mentioned. So I just want to reiterate to the freeholders and to the professional staff that we are here to work in a spirit of public-private cooperation, and I just wanted to let the freeholders know of that situation and to put in the plug for the ghost walks. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public that would like to speak? State your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I got to say, you're not behaving as a public official should if you dismiss questions about lead prevention, lead poisoning. That's an important issue. People care about it.
You know the rules. We've had the rules here. You've been here many times, and you know the rules.
The rules are, you're free to answer the question if you want. If you don't want to answer, you don't have to.
You have five minutes. Speak your piece.
So I'll start by pointing out that the freeholders broke their promise to put out this agenda sufficiently in front of the meeting. I checked the website today. It must have been 3:00 or 4:00 PM, and there was no agenda there. So that's-
It changed. It was advertised, but it changed because of the swearing-in.
Okay. So when I checked earlier today-
It was an oversight because of the new freeholder coming on board. There was no mal-intent on the freeholder board or our clerk.
Okay. Well, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt. Hopefully, you'll return the favor. So I think the Board of Elections needs some additional scrutiny. The, you know, this board, you know, I might not like every way you run the meeting, but at least you bring a camera and you put it on, you make a video recording, and you let people take pictures and videos and audio. Well, the Board of Elections feels that they're not best served by having transparency, and they actually do not allow videos of their meetings. And I think some really important things were said at the most recent meeting by Perth Amboy residents who were raising concerns about serious problems with the election. And I know that there's no particular freeholder here from Perth Amboy, and I think that you guys need to pay attention to what's going on in Perth Amboy, even if you don't live there. It's a very bad situation. Basically, the bilingual poll clerks were taken, swapped out at the last minute for folks who can't speak the language that a lot of voters speak, and that is really disgraceful. And it's, at best, discrimination, and at worst, election fraud, and really not right what's going on.
Those are pretty, those are pretty strong words.
At worst, at worst. At worst it is.
The election didn't even get here yet, and-
People are voting today.
And it's the last, it's the last minute. You're saying the last minute. We have till November 8th to vote.
Okay. Well, I know that there was a last-minute swap of the clerks, the poll clerks. And I think anybody who wants a free and fair election should look into that. And I think the Board of Elections is suspect because they don't want transparency. They don't want people to record those meetings where these things are being discussed. I also would like to ask your opinion, sir. I know, Mr. Freeholder Director, you're a resident of Carteret, and I know that there's a ballot question in Carteret. I wanted to ask if you have a position on whether or not you think the mayor should be in charge of appointing the school board there?
I haven't decided yet.
Okay. Respectfully, as somebody who's been in a city where we've had both, we, you know, we used to have a mayor-appointed board, and we switched to the elected board, I think having an elected board is superior. It is absolutely in the best interests of democracy to have elections for the school board. And since we've made that change, you know, I'm still not thrilled with our Board of Education here, but they do work a little bit harder because they actually have more people to please than just the mayor who appointed them. They actually have to seek reelection and win it if they want to stay on the board. And I think that's kind of how our system's supposed to work. So I'm a little suspicious of why the mayor would want to change that and why the Board of Ed would want to change that. And I certainly don't think that the people in Carteret really want to change that, and I hope that you'll, you know, see it my way and use your power to influence folks to keep the elections and not give up that democracy. I think that would be a mistake, and I read Mayor Ryman's sort of reasoning for it was that the Board of Ed is the only thing that people have to complain about in Carteret, and that everything else is just fine. And while I'm sure there's a lot of good things going on in Carteret, I do often read about homicides and, you know, stabbings and shootings. And I think that the mayor's logic is flawed, and this is the time when someone is asking you, as the citizens, as the voters, to give up your power, that's the time you need to give the most scrutiny to that logic, and that logic just doesn't hold up to me. I think there've got to be some problems in Carteret that Mayor Ryman could be focusing on, and I got to think that if they've had the elected board this long, and the only people who want to change it are Mayor Ryman and his, you know, administration, his supporters-
I think it would be more appropriate that if you have a local question or concern, they have council meetings twice a month, and the public is, has the right to speak, and I think your comments would be welcome.
Great.
And obviously, like I said, there's a time there that you could speak.
Great.
I think that would be the exact person to ask.
That's time.
Okay, great. I might actually do that. Thank you for the idea.
Anyone else in the public that would like to speak?
Move the close of public portion?
Second.
Motion to close by Freeholder Tamara, seconded by Freeholder Valente, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. There are motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Freeholder Valente, seconded by Freeholder Tamara, all in favor?